Today is October 2nd. It's 10:35 a.m. in the morning. This is a session. I'm Jeff Reisner, the Chair of Finance and Personnel. We're gathered here today to discuss a couple of issues. The main issue is our community center cash flow. And what we're going to do is have the interested parties solutions. Who would like to go first? Administration, auditor?
I would.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We handed out a packet, as you all know, and it's got kind of bit in it. The top page is actually like an overview that we wrote up, just so you would have all the basics. And then the rest of it is the backup to look at, you know, finance reports and so on. So I just want to thank you, Member Reisner, for calling this meeting. I've been trying to get a meeting going for three and a half weeks. I realized Rich was out of town that first week. But this is not a typical budget problem that we deal with regularly by email or phone call. And that's why I asked for a meeting. This is a cash flow issue, which is more serious. And while we have had it in the past, we don't have this very often. So the first thing I want to do is clarify the expectations of the auditor's office. As auditor, I'm responsible for keeping track of the city's finances and monitoring that money is being spent in accordance with city ordinances, the ORC, and other regulatory agencies. It isn't the auditor's responsibility to decide how a department will balance its budget. There needs to be a cooperative effort. We've always had an open door policy. If anybody wanted any information, we provided. That is why, since my original email on September 8th, I've been requesting a meeting. We are able to review the numbers, but it is the people who know the day-to-day operations that need to provide the specifics of what adjustments can be made to the budget and revenue sources. We can't look at the numbers and know that enrollment is down in the daycare, you know, program, or it's up for exercise programs, or anything like that. We can't know that just by looking at the numbers. There's a need to have both a short-term, right now, short-term and long-term solution. Short-term, we need to increase the balance of cash in the 271 Fund, which is community center. So there's money to cover current expenses, especially payroll. Now, our bookkeeping system is complicated, and I don't expect everybody, even department heads, to totally understand how it works, which is why we watch it and try to let you know when something is going on. We have, we work on a cash basis. Our revenue and expense reports are separate. It's not like in your checkbook where you keep a running total, you know exactly how much money you have to save. We don't do that. Then we also have this fund, fund balance report, which tells you how much money is actually in the bank, because you don't have that running total in a checkbook. So in the beginning of the year, council will approve a budget for everyone in the city, how much you can spend. They base it on the revenue projections that we make at the end of the year. Now, there are projections, there are estimated resources. We can't know that every penny that we estimate is going to come in. I'll wait just a minute for Member Pappy to get up there. I'm just on the front page of the packet, so you haven't missed much. So short-term, so the issue is the cash flow thing right now. So we need to take care of this by the end of the year. And actually, that first week when I sent the email to Rich, and he was, I don't know if you're on vacation or vacation, was not available, I made an executive decision to unencumber $5,000 so that we could pay the bills that were in front of us. Part of the issue is that makes it hard for department heads, and I understand this, is we don't encumber payroll. So that doesn't show up on the reports as money that's already spoken for. It's in the budget, but it's not encumbered. So that is probably part of the issue. Their payroll runs at about $20,000 every two weeks. And then you have regular bills, like gas, electric, telephones, and the inter-fund transfers are taken out once a month. And those are the monies that are sent to the medical fund for all the employees and to the internal service fund for computer and vehicle maintenance. So those are automatic amounts that we pay every month that we have to, and payroll that we have to have in there. So, so as I said, I did unencumber some money on a purchase order so that we could make those payments that week. There are a number of accounts that have money encumbered that may be able to be unencumbered to increase the amount of cash available. The thing is, I don't know when I look at that, if you have $10,000 in land improvements, if you have something that you're planning to spend that $10,000 on, or if that was a budget line item put in there so that if something came up, you could spend it. Okay? I don't know what encumbrances are absolutely spoken for, and which ones are just there in case you need them, which we could unencumber and do other things with them. So on September 18th, Laura put together a lengthy email. We were not getting any meetings set up, and so we, it appeared that people were trying to move money around and things that were not the answer to this issue. So she put this out. This would be your second handout there, where it talks about the short-term cash flow shortage, payroll, and medical. Basically, this says some of the things that I just said. Things that are not encumbered, and things that are automatic payments that you really have to budget for, and you know that, like I said, gas, electric, things like that. And so I don't know if everyone was able to read this. Laura, do you want to add anything about this in any of your outlines?
There are questions.
Yeah, so we tried to put the information out there without a meeting, to give you an idea of what we're looking at, and so that you can, so you know what monthly bills you really have to budget for, and which, and so that you can try to figure out which ones that you could maybe change and decide not to pay. The thing is, and this was my issue that I put out there, if you look at their fund balance, and their budget, and their encumbrances, you know, we're not allowed to appropriate more money than we think we're going to get. However, the community center fund is just very tight. There's less than $5,000 unappropriated in that fund. And that $5,000 can be wiped out pretty easily with revenue negatives that aren't coming in, which is something I'll get to later. So it's really not enough to have that small amount for as big an operation as that is. That's one thing for a small grant fund, but not for a community center. And so there are options for what you can do to increase money. My first question, which, you know, I don't have an answer to, is when was the last time you increased fees for anything? I know it's not popular. I know we just asked for a levy, but, you know, there's a limit on other ways you can increase your revenue. Otherwise, you have to cut back on your services, and you know that. You know, you're the manager, Rich. You're the one I wanted in the room. So another suggestion was to take money from the community center debt fund. And I've mentioned this to Rich before, but it's not anything we've done yet, so we didn't do it so far. But as you know, the community center debt fund was, is money from the levy in place, and I've put a copy of the ordinance in here. Yeah, Laura's attachments on here are our reports, just back to what I was just talking about, from our system that show you the monies, you know, revenue and expense and where they are. Well, then there's a copy of this old 95 ordinance that tells what that money can be used for. "Any and all expenses associated with the construction," which is already constructed, "equipment and furnishing of a recreation/community facility for the city of Athens." So, and I had actually, we've talked about this before, and I had consulted our bond council about this, because we, we knew, oh, we knew that...
Just a minute.
We knew that we were going to have a surplus in revenue for that 20-year bond, which is in a good position to be. Better to have extra than not have enough to pay off our debt, which we will be paying off this year. But we will have probably $650,000 to $1 million left in that fund. It can only be spent on these things. So we cannot just transfer a chunk of money from there for operating expenses. We did, and this is right in the middle of this top page, go back, I should say Heather did, everybody knows Heather is our accounts payable person, and found some vouchers where we spent money on equipment this year. Okay? And we have, we have copies of those vouchers, but I didn't copy those. There's three of them. It's all like fitness equipment. I don't know if you remember exactly what it was. The total of those three is $74,315. So that would be a council decision, maybe working with the administration to decide if you want to retroactively transfer that money. It was paid for this year into the community center fund to replace that money that was spent on equipment, which is a valid use of those funds.
Valid use of the $650,000, or whatever that...
It's going to be extra, yeah, by the end of this year. There's several hundred thousand sitting in there now.
Okay.
But we're continuing to collect that tax. Our new tax doesn't go into effect until January. So this is still, yes?
Just to clarify, you kind of lost me there. The money that was used to pay for the equipment came from where?
The community center fund.
Community center fund, okay, so...
But the thing is, we can't buy, that's what makes it a little more complicated if you want to do that. We can't pay for equipment and furnishings out of the debt fund. Council has to move that money from the debt fund into the community center fund for that purpose. And we have a specific amount that's already been paid, you know, the idea of just moving the 50,000 or 100,000 is really not a valid way to do that. But if you know what your equipment or furnishings are going to cost, that's the amount of money you transfer out of that fund into the community center fund, which is where they paid for all of this equipment fund.
Okay, so we take the money from here and put it there.
Yes.
And now we have an additional $79,000.
Exactly.
To last us to the, well, in addition to whatever other funds we have till the end of the year.
Well, yes and no. It's not that simple, as Paula said.
I was afraid of that.
An email went out today. Well, it is and it isn't. That would, that would help them tremendously get through the end of the year. It really would. But it's a temporary fix, because that money's going to be used this year. So it's not like you're going to have, next year, you know, we'll be in the same boat if there aren't some changes made. But that's up to an administrative decision to know where to take, you know, and what to do about fees and all that.
We can tackle that after we take care of this.
Right, so I would highly recommend that council, you know, transfer that money. I think it's a valid transfer and use of those funds, but that's not my decision to make. That's the other, you know, thing about this. It's not up to me to tell the community center, you know, how to run their operations, what to charge, or anything else.
Okay.
You know? All I can say is, you don't have enough money for your bills, kind of thing, so. Short-term loan is also, loan has also been suggested, and Laura and I talked about that, and we, she put it in her email as a possibility, because we don't, we didn't know, you know, at the time, really what the community center was looking at. However, I do not recommend that at all, because we don't have a plan. If we can barely pay our bills now, how are we going to pay that back when the payment comes due in a year? But we have done that for other things in the past, mostly like transportation. We would borrow, say, $100,000 to purchase a bus, because it was, you know, reimbursement grant that we were going to get. So we knew we had the money to pay for that coming in, or the community center. We know we have this tax revenue coming in to pay our loan payments, but I don't recommend the loan. In the long term, so for examples of the cash and carryover, well, I should say, in your, you'll see, this is a detailed expense transaction for this year that shows the equipment purchases. So you'll see that from this year, and then you can total those up. So in the long term, we just want to point out, the carryover balance, that I think this has been kind of coming, is the year-end fund reports for 12, 2012, 13, and 14 are in there. And you'll see that we had over $300,000 carryover in '12 and '13, and $138,000 in '14. And, you know, we just, we don't have that now, at all. The next thing I have in here is a revenue report, and I just want to give them a heads up, that if you look to the right, and these are, these are in the monthly reports that we send out through all the departments and council and, you know, different people. But this one that I printed is just the community center, 271. On the right, it has percent collected. But what's going to happen soon, now that we're three-quarters of the way through the year, is we're going to go in and we're going to reduce some of that estimated revenue, which is going to eat into the unappropriated balance. Because a good example would be the bus, and these are some of the issues that came up this year that Rich could not have foreseen, and there's probably nothing we can do about. We tried. The bus stop lease income for the use of the community center has been cut in half. As you can see, at this point in September, we should have collected 75% of what we expected. It's only 29%. And the same is going on with interest. It's not as large an amount of money, but that $2,600, we're going to get less than $300, because the fund balance is so low. It's based on what's in the fund. So we're going to lose over $2,000 just in interest in their estimated revenue.
So that lease option changed somewhere along the line?
It did. It did. ODOT, I wanted to just say, got picky, and, you know, I don't want to be overly critical, but yeah. We met, we went round and round about the amount of space, the time, the resources that the community center puts into that, and they just, they don't want to pay for it. So, and we, and we do this program through HACCAP, and so we sat down with them, we've gone through it, and we just really didn't get very far. So as you can see, we were expecting $40,000. Three-quarters of the way through the year, we only have $11,000 in there. Yes?
You're talking about the ODOT, I knew we had talked about it, because we sat in the meeting and talked about that. I didn't know they had enacted it already.
Well, evidently, this tells you what we've gotten.
I thought they were still in discussions about that.
Well, we would like to still be in discussion, I think, but...
So they never sent a notification, no letter, no nothing?
I don't know. That would have gone to them.
I'll have to get that information from Charlene, but as the auditor stated, we met repeatedly about the Go Bus and the impact it had. And basically, the funding entity said that they would only approve this amount for this space. We had no other choice. So that, that service in addition, I'm hearing from Rich and Andrew, that the bus ticket sales are down as well, because online, people are now going online, so we would get a portion of that.
Right, that's the next line on here. Exactly. That's, they're buying their tickets online, so we're not getting that either. You can see.
Well, it's kind of hard to make a balance, or a budgetary decision, when the rug's pulled out from underneath you, isn't it?
Well, we were aware that this was getting reduced this year, but we're already in it. We're not going to stop the Go Bus. But as the auditor states, when we plan for 2016, we're going to have to really look at this and find out. There's a reason why, we've said this before, Aha University got rid of their stop, because it doesn't make money, you know? It's once again a service, so.
It's a pickup stop.
Pardon me?
You're saying it's a pickup stop, because they still stop on campus.
They do still stop on campus.
But they don't buy tickets.
That doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, so that, but that came up this year, and, you know, we were estimating...
All right, that's a side issue.
So anyway, so you got the idea, that there's going to be a lot of money that I'm going to be reducing based on those percentages of what we've collected. And the fact is, everybody should know this, that, those always are estimated resources, and we go in and change those all the time. We get a new grant, we bump the rest, the resources up. And we file that with the county budget commission all the time. There's always, that's why you don't want your unappropriated balance or your fund balance to get so low that, you know, if you do get a loss, then you're in trouble. It's like keeping a savings account, you know? You can spend all the money in your checking account, but you need a savings account for when things happen. The final handout here is a current unappropriated balance sheet. Just to show, you can see in there where the community center, you know, and this will be something else I'll point out about what we can and can't do. That $60,000, the new appropriation from council this year, is for the generator. That's going to happen this year. They need that money. We can't reduce that and use that for anything else, because they're going to need it to pay for that installation. So they're down to $4,800. So where are we? So long term, we talked about the carryover balance and the differences from one year to the next. And we really, so if something, if we want to do something in the short term, we'll be in trouble in January. One of the main reasons for our carryover balance is the funds, so we can make that first payroll. Because it's just like your salaries. You can't pay a year's mortgage payment in January thinking you're going to earn this money, and, you know, well, I'm getting $30,000, $40,000 for the year. You don't have it in January. It comes in gradually. So we have to have money in the bank to make that first payroll, because the revenues won't be coming in. You know, they come in weekly at the community center. And utilities, you know, taxes, a lot of departments depend on, you know, revenue coming in throughout the year. So we will need, need a better carryover balance in the community center fund, for sure. So then, as I said, well, and the next one, as I said, as far as raising fees, cutting services, that is not up to me. That is up to the community center staff, the administration, to look at the big picture and decide how you're going to do this. Because pumping money in there right now is not going to solve the long-term problem. Another, you know, caveat I want to throw out there is the new changes in the way the city's able to collect income taxes is most definitely going to reduce our income tax revenue, which is what they, you know, that's a big part of their operations, is the community center, is the tax revenue. So, but we just don't know for sure how that's going to turn out. But I would absolutely not count on any increased revenue, as we have for several years, at least, you know, 2%. We've kind of counted on, which barely covers, you know, annual pay raises. You know, payroll is the big expense in any department, and everybody gets raises every year, and, you know, it adds up. That affects their pension and taxes, you know, things, benefits that we have to match. So it's just something to keep in mind, that we're not going to have that automatic increase in revenue.
Yeah, and this, to remind people, is coming from Columbus, from the state. And we fought against that. Your, your department did an amazing job, and we fought because it is, we knew that it was going to reduce.
I appreciate that, yes, because our tax administrator, Tina Timberman, has spent a lot of time, she went for a day over to Marietta, and on her own time, to hold a little workshop for people from Belgrade, Washington County, Cambridge, Zanesville, came, you know, to help them understand what's going to happen, because it is going to have a negative impact throughout the state. There's just no way around it. And we know some of the impacts for ours, like the operating loss carryforward, which we estimate about $60,000 loss a year, but there's many other ones in there. And as you said, it is from the state, and we, you know, you're going to have to approve a new code to match this. It's not just adjustments to the code we've lived under for years and years. It's going to be a brand-new tax code. So we have to keep that in mind when we're planning, that we might not get all the revenue that we thought we might get from taxes. And then this is the other one on the other side to that point. Your new tax levy that you just passed encompasses community center and recreation operations. Okay? The pool is actually a recreation issue. Some of the other things are community center. You know, there's a whole list in there, I don't have it memorized, of things that council and the community wanted to see addressed by, you know, Rich's department. So when it comes time to start collecting that money, this is something I was going to bring up in the budget talks for council, you need to decide if you want to make a split on where that money is applied. Part of that could go into the community center. The majority would have to probably go into recreation, because we know the pool is the thing. However, if the pool becomes attached to the community center, then it's a community center fund thing. So that could be some extra revenue into the community center, depending on what council and administration agree should be a split. So, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, Rich, but that's something that, you know, you might want to think about. Look at the plans. I know you guys have a list of things that people have asked for and that you want to do, and how much money should go where. That money cannot go into that community center debt fund in January, so, because that's very, that money is very specific what that's for. So we'll have to figure out how we're going to take those new taxes and use them for the purposes you all wanted. So that's something to keep in mind. So it could help the revenue some, although, as I said, the majority of it really are recreation facility operations.
Ms. Mary Pappy.
So backing up to this money from the 20-year piece of legislation, there's $200,000 in there right now, you think, and then there's by the end of it?
Oh, yeah, there's probably more like worth that. But we have another, do we have another debt payment at the end of this year, I think, in December?
One more.
Right.
One more.
Yes.
So I'm looking at...
So that money is there, and it can be accessed through council.
Right.
For the community center, but it can only be used for those three purposes that are in the ordinance. We can't just dump that money in the community center fund and let them pay salaries and buy paper with. Okay? It's very clear.
I wanted to review again what the three reasons were.
Kind of down towards the bottom. It's highlighted on my copy, but it didn't come out when I copied it.
It was construction, equipment, and furnishing. But with the auditor's done, and Andrew had worked with Heather, I believe, to get this information, your numbers higher were much happier, is what we paid out of operating supplies that could be now transferred, and that is our request to you.
To make that transfer in the short term.
Yeah. But also going forward, with this money remains.
Yes.
We can still use, okay, equipment will contend and need to be replaced. Furnishings need to be replaced.
That's why I'm saying, that, that chunk of money has to sit there where it is, and then council can move it in there for these specific purposes.
What about the generator?
Generator was the first item that I've come to ask to use that money.
Equipment.
That, that ordinance, didn't we catch for the money for that?
If we're trying to hang onto that money and not touch it for as long as we possibly can go, we've reached that breaking point. We've purchased, we did the perfection plan, we've put a new chiller in. That money could have been used on a chiller. We've run out of our operating budget every year to cover these necessities.
Okay.
Now we're, we're at, we've made some tougher decisions.
Right, that $60,000 did come out of the debt fund, so that was transferred, appropriated transferred and appropriated for the generator. So, yes, you're exactly right. That is the kind of thing that they should be looking at and asking you to move the money for. But we can't just dump that leftover money into the community center operating fund.
Correct.
But the, how much did you come up with? Almost $80,000?
$74,000.
But if, if the chiller was bought out of, which, the chiller was bought out of the community center, not that fund, the other fund?
We can't, I don't know that we can go past this year, so...
Yeah, several years ago.
So that's something, that's something that going forward...
Sure, we know.
We'd be a lot more careful about...
With this next levy and the tax, that's why you were discussing this.
Right. It's not related to, I mean, I would say that it was more, you're right on us, to say, if this is what you want, capital that meets these requirements, we would ask that money to be transferred in the debt fund into the capital equipment.
And just be a lot more careful about charging the debt fund for the things that can be charged to it, instead of saying, we're just going to let that money sit and...
Right.
I think that's probably gotten...
It's the kind of thing that we wouldn't have wanted to start doing that too long ago, in case the tax revenue went down, because we had to make those, you know, loan payments. They're like $500,000 a year. So we had to be sure that we had those, the money to cover that. And so, yes, we could have maybe gone back a couple of years and started that, but at And so, yes, we could have maybe gone back a couple of years and started that, but at this point, I mean, just.
It's hard to do something outside an audited year. And just to be clear, not, the money that has been utilized from the debt fund have all been done for a lawful purpose. It's always.
Right.
But you're right, we just need to.
Councilmember Canterbury.
And this will probably be for a discussion in committee, but when was the last time the user fees was, was increased?
I don't know. That was a question I had, you know, it's always been, it's an issue. It's easy to let it go. We, they, they are subsidized by tax dollars. We provide a community service. They have to make that decision on whether, you know, people will withstand that. However, it's always been my contention and why we raise water and sewer fees every year, that people can take a small hit more often than, you know, waiting five years and getting a bigger hit. But that is not up to me.
The reason I ask that is because you brought up, as you said, with water and sewers raised, utilities raised, equipment, doesn't get cheaper, employees doesn't get cheaper. So when you have all these things that were paying out of a fund, you know, and you're not bringing in additional revenue, it does create a problem or eventually it will create a problem.
The additional expense, just, you know, cost of living every year. You really need to keep that in mind and, but that's up to them to talk about now. So I guess.
I'd like to hear something about that.
We've not raised fees for probably eight years. 2007, I think, was probably the last time we pressed that. All the other operating expenses have went down.
No.
I wish.
What they're finding is that, and I think Jeff had sent an email about this as well, is that there is another fitness facility in the community that waits until our brochure is published and $5 less on the different programs and what have you, so.
It's more than that. I mean, there's more sports entities out there using our fields and charging and cutting in our revenue.
Which fields are those?
Both soccer fields and baseball fields. There's other, other groups offering our same services and they're undercutting our prices. We offer a ton of wellness programs we don't charge. The county is an example. Entire county gets the same deal the city employees do. Now, I'm not saying we're going to generate a bunch of revenue if we turn around and tell them, you guys have to pay.
You mean county employees?
County employees, yes. And that's branched out much further than the county engineer's office, where we started, and/or the sheriff's department. There's different things we can do to raise revenue as far as rental. Some of the nonprofit or bigger organizations, they don't always pay. They get free services at the community center.
And since when they rent a room?
Yes. We offer a lot of services to these groups. Now, I could outline it and make it a little more straightforward, but for 15 years, we've worked with these different groups, provide, I mean, if you want to do a fundraiser at our facility, you can do it and raise money. Or you cannot do it at Baker or anywhere else. So we're probably one of the few facilities that give these groups an opportunity to have an event and, and make or set out to achieve their goals in raising funds.
Well, that sounds very simple, but yeah, you would get a lot of feedback if you all of a sudden.
Yes.
I'm not saying you shouldn't make some changes. You know, you have to look.
Roger, we had to make some tough decisions about that.
This past year was the lowest carryover we've ever, this last year is the lowest carryover we've ever had.
Right.
Equipment, that could have come out of the debt fund.
Right.
Again, we've not secured.
For what?
For the next 20 years because we're not going to collect anymore. And the community center is going to pay us.
I'm confused. Sorry.
That, the debt fund money that's left over, that's going to stop.
Very much.
If it's a million dollars, expensive facility.
Correct.
So what he's saying.
I just wanted to make sure that's next 20.
No, no.
That money, that's your 20.
Correct.
Samey's account, it's an emergency fund.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so to me, is, is a false.
Well, I think that's what the auditor was speaking to when you determine what the vision should be. We've got a crunch from, meaning is it 80, 20, is it 70, 30, 70 rec, 30% community? So that there is still some fund for the future.
Or the community center.
And, you know, when we're talking revenue, that is more, we talk about trying to essentially put, but we are, they are, the department heads are beginning their budget planning and so there'll be more coming forward for 2016. They occupy quite a bit of space in all their programs for $22,000 a year.
See, I thought about that. I have no idea what your agreement is with them, but they've got a pretty sweet deal there.
Well, I think this is.
It's a service, provide.
When we had our discussion, parking garage, is that there are certain assumptions by the community, assumptions people have to realize are costing money, you know, helping to provide space for senior, for seniors, nonprofit, going to, or is, well works, right?
Yeah.
And, I mean, if they're trying, if they're undercutting us, that is, is concerning because they don't have the same sort of, of requirements that we do, you know? They don't, community, I mean, so I.
They have a different pot of resources that they can utilize their operations that we don't.
Right. And people, I don't know if members know all the stuff that the community center does. And it's just kind of an assumption, like the garage, somebody, you know, and that used to just be an assumption, you know, bounty on the bricks and we, that we're going to have, be what we need is, that the community center is doing, you know?
Which is one of those, but we really shouldn't, I mean, and we've talked about this even with the U meetings, is shouldn't be, we all want to be this healthy community and we're trying to, you know, figure out how we can.
And it would even make more sense, they complemented the sort of classes that we do, that they can do. You know, I mean, that would be the most logical competing.
I'm looking here also at some of our preschool, assuming that those are not areas that make money.
Typically, they're one of our best.
They break even?
Um, no, that, and it would address some of our cash flow. Operated a loss this summer. There were some changes. We just pulled all the numbers into the budget. So there needs to be additional changes as we move forward.
One thing I'd like to add, if you're looking at this revenue report, you can't expect all 5% or above. I'm assuming the youth sports, which is at 37, 38%, will have a bump this fall with soccer programs and, you know, whatever.
Registration is over and hurt by the five other groups who.
Have their own leads.
Sign up kids, take a fee or donation, show up at our city fields, on our conditions of the field.
So can I talk about that a little bit? Because I'm, I'm concerned, there are now new soccer programs within the city for youth.
Yes. Well, not for us, our soccer program.
And they're paying a fee to use our fields?
No. We've charged them, it was Sandlot. They volunteered their service. In lieu of that, we did charge them fees.
And how long was that agreement for?
There is no agreement. It was a handshake, director, I've tried to.
For how many years, Rich? How long?
I'm ready to, starting 2006. Demands us to grow grass, goes and pays $60 an hour to use their fields because, now, we've charged them a user fee, but it's $500 for a season. That doesn't, it should be, comes with the, the ball tournament, I charge them by the dollar by the hour. For two, community center, about $1,500. If it's down to soccer fields, they don't pay a tournament fee, nor does expenses and emptying trash, cleaning restrooms, maintaining restrooms, staff that need to stop by, all that.
Mowing the grass out?
No, no, we mow the grass. That's the typical thing we would do, but above and beyond that. Now, Sandlot has paid, I mean, their budget during their season. Because when I did my homework a few years back, $1,000 or $1,000 a week for Sandlot football program. We get wrapped up in on the weekends down there. Now, with that being said, just so there's no surprise, in baseball uniform, interior eyes giving us sad song, that's it. That's not the bottom line. We're sitting here because we're providing services to an outside group.
And again, that is recreation. So just trying to get the two funds separated in terms of.
It's just another assumption that, that people have about the city is.
Problem here and worry about the future a little while later. But we, we can either, we can raise user fees, okay? That's what we're talking about. Okay, raise the user fees to, for that, to help balance our budget. Or we raise the general income tax.
I guess the immediate request is to go ahead, to request the council to go ahead and proceed with an ordinance to transfer the money from, that had been out of the operating from the debt fund. So that will free up $79,000. In addition, Andrew checked and checked and rechecked, but he may want to check one more time about some, I don't know, did you get a chance to look at this?
So that's my question, that would be my question is, is there, should it be one appropriation to transfer? It sounds like we have a $79,000, but we still have three months left of this budgetary year.
Right. It's $75,000, but that's another thing, and I don't know if you want Andrew to address it, or you guys from this email and this work that Andrew has done, which is exactly what you need and what I can't provide, are specifics to how much money you need for everything. The thing to keep in mind is there are also requests in here for additional monies needed for the end of the year, which is very common. And so, you know, he's, he's put together quite a report here and we know that there's going to be some money needed and, but that's, you know, up to Paula and Rich to present that to council and ask for that. But keep that in mind, that, that, you know, increases of almost $28,000 are needed.
But then we're also proposing to reduce our land improvements, the $10,000, just, you know, it was there as a, as a placeholder and they've determined they don't need it, obviously can't afford it now. Machinery reduction and equipment, is that right, Andrew?
Yeah.
For machinery and equipment, we're just not going to purchase something that we wanted to.
See, and that's what I started out saying. That's something I can't know. You, you've got a purchase order out there for it, just an open one in case you need it, but I can't know that you don't have a plan for it or aren't going to end up needing it. And so this is exactly what we need to move your money around. As I said, I made an executive decision that first week when you were out and reduced in, you know, a purchase order by $5,000 so that we could meet payroll.
Well, this is something that we do at the end of the year with a lot of other programs is to jiggle the money around because you never know at the beginning of the budget what's they have, maybe, you know, you don't need lands, maintenance, but your mower blows up and then you have to change money around. And that's understandable. I think it's, that's, that's something that we do that makes sense. We just have to figure out which lines they're coming from and put it in and then start addressing long-term.
Well, understood. And that's what we're requesting, is that we can have something up on Monday.
To, to, could jiggle?
Yes.
I could jiggle.
This document right here that you guys have put together where you want to bet $9.40 to.
Does anybody else want a copy of that? This email from Rich?
Right.
I would.
Earlier when he was talking, auditor.
Thank you.
You, you said the month-to-month balance, that you don't do the month-to-month balance from the department or to the department.
No, we're provided the information. It's not, that's what she's stating.
Oh, yeah, the, the finance reports monthly are sent to the department heads and I think yours, they go to Rich and maybe Vicki or, I don't know if they go to anybody else.
Andrew.
Andrew gets them, sorry. So it's, it's always the department heads, but then there might be someone else in that department that actually, you know, pays the bills, that needs it. Council gets it, law directors, everybody gets their budget every month. We're required to do that and that's what council is approving every month, are the finance reports from the previous month, because the state orders want to know that someone else has looked at those. And so they do. We have a whole, I have a two-page list of all the people that get those. Like in EPW, all the plant managers get them besides Andy and, you know, the supervisors. We send out a lot of them every month. So the, the information is available and it's sent out. Now, I realize that, you know, we're the money office, you know, their, their main, you know, objective in life is, is the recreational facilities and to provide this service to the community. But we're happy and available to, you know, talk to them anytime. And honestly, something else I will say, this has been an issue off and on over the years, Rich. We've, we've sat down and talked about the funds coming in and, you know, it's like the different departments in the general fund. I don't, none of them are self-supporting. Even court brings in quite a bit of money. We still subsidize them with general fund monies. And it's the same there, but they're separated and so, you know, the, the way that they can be subsidized, they don't have that extra tax money sitting there in, in the general fund. We would have to give it to them or move it to them. And actually, their budget was in probably worse shape when I first became auditor and Rich has done a very good job. And we have talked over the years and if you look at, I didn't include a, an expense report, but if you look at their budget, I just don't feel that, you know, it's outrageous. They're not spending money on a lot of frivolous things at all. It's just that the money is not there to cover the expenses. Now, he's done a good job, but now it's, it's caught up with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would the administration like to speak on all this?
You've heard me. I'd like to transfer the funds. I'd like, the auditor has to review these other requests in terms of that, but reduction in those different categories thereby hopefully freeing up enough and a little more to pay to get us through the end of the year.
And we'll be seeing other departments probably doing this too, which seems always to happen at the end of the year. So maybe not as much and.
Not to the level of the cash flow issue that we have with the community center.
Well, I mean, the community center also has the largest amount of people coming in and paying cash and having programs, more than other, you know, land maintenance sort of stuff. So I think it makes sense and using, using that $74,000 will certainly help and so.
It will, it's actually 88. Am I right?
Is that your total? Here's the thing.
And we have a lesser total.
So, we added 5,000 plus onto Andrew's number, and then whatever else he has in his emails, so...
And we think this would get us through the end of the year with that infusion out of the debt fund paying off that equipment?
I do, but we'll have to put it in there and see, and then we need to maybe sit down again and look at...
Still not going to provide a very large carryover.
Right, that's the biggest issue.
Which is a concern.
Issue is the carryover.
I mean, we'll still continue, they'll still continue to collect, so there'll be money coming in each month, but it's not enough.
Right. We bring in about $5,000 a week just from programs and fees, you know, punch cards, all that kind of stuff, so...
How much of a carryover will we need to make sure we make payroll in January?
Well, there's 40,000 right there.
How much?
40,000.
40,000.
For the community, for...
And pay miscellaneous bills maybe.
Oh, right. Yeah, there'll be, yeah, utilities, we can't wait till February to pay all the other bills that are due.
She included the...
And if we put them off, they're still going to be there in February. But payroll, we, by law, if somebody works, we have to pay them.
One payroll is...
Right. That's why I said for the month of January, 40,000.
Twenty, yeah, 20,000.
Okay. So, at least 40,000 just for payroll in January.
A question here, this is from the huge email you sent. Second page, near the, in the center of it, it says, "The combined total from all these measures gives us debt fund 69,000 unencumbered, we can move 22,000 unencumbered, that we need permission to move 59,000, total 150,752."
What he's saying is the, it's increased, but the debt fund plus what he's unencumbering could result in 150,000. But the caveat being, even if he's unencumbering the 10,000, the cash isn't in the bank there now. So, the realistic cash infusion, once auditor's office reviews, is going to be more like the 70 to 80,000.
I guess so. 74,350?
Yes, Paula understands. I know it's kind of complicated if you don't deal with it every day, but that's exactly what it is.
And moving forward, I work with my staff and submit a 2016 budget, and then I don't see anything until February. And I would like to make a request to be more involved, the auditor's office and the finance committee, to mull over those numbers and make sure we have a sound budget.
Okay, well, for that to happen, the finance and personnel committee would have to have those numbers sometime by November.
Absolutely.
Which we're all going to work towards, you know, that the mayor is supposed to be tasked with...
By the way, we'll cut it.
I think what he's, that's a separate...
Usually when I get the budget in February, I just kind of go, okay, I'll work with it.
Not what you thought it would be, but I'm happy to work with anybody and move forward.
Believe me, every department wants...
I'm not hearing your plans for the future. I mean, to me, that's what I want to get out of...
There'll be more user fees, I think we're kind of, you know, and a little of the other hot topics.
Cutting services, no, that's not going to work.
How about Arts West? How are we hanging in there with that facility?
Years past, the Athens Community Center has covered the lost in Parks and Recs and Arts West. We've generated enough revenue, so we've come out, if you read our annual reports, we're in good shape. Not the case anymore. Parks and Rec, I think, is maybe break even, and Arts West, we need to reevaluate how we do things, it's in the reg.
They do at least have a better, see, Arts West is recreation, not community center. So, everything that happens in the community center is that fund. Everything else, soccer program, whatever else, you know, Arts West is recreation.
One of the things that's looming that I'm worried about is the armory. I mean, I'm looking at that, you want to take $2, $3 million out of the new levy fund and put it towards there? And I have to say right now, I'm not sure that's really a good idea. I mean, things are tight, they're going to get tighter, and I'm just saying, thinking, okay, we put $3 million of that, what are we going to have? We don't even have a plan for it. No one knows what to do with it.
The money for the armory is not coming from out of this fund, at least for the stabilization of the brick repair.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the future, okay?
Moving forward.
Stabilization, that's not going to cost much compared to what we're talking about. $3 million is like, well, just to maintain it for the next 20 years or so, I don't know. But we're going to have to get a really serious look at it.
Yes.
Up to you guys, I'm not...
Moving forward, to get some food for thought, when we do have projects and we move into spending money, i.e. the pool is one of those money-spending projects, playgrounds, Arts West, et cetera, do we draw certain...
Bathroom facilities at West State.
Exactly. Do we draw a certain threshold where you want to be involved, or every project you're involved in saying yay or nay, or...
I think one thing that concerns me is that there's not an overall budget, you know, going out, not a budget, but kind of forecasting sort of things of, this is, within the 10 years, these are the sort of expenditures that we think that we're going to be looking at, so that we don't get into the situation where somebody says, we want to build a pool and there's no upfront budget, we want to build a pool and it's going to not cost more than X, sort of thing, so that we don't find ourselves 15 years from now saying, oh, look at all these projects we've been doing and we're over, we've overextended ourselves.
There has to be a forecast, I mean, the bond council won't even release those funds without having that in place. And they did do a master plan update, even though it's been attacked, and so Andrew and Rich have started, you know, what they want to do these next 20 years.
And I think that, I've had questions from people, you know, when I've been doing my shopping about that sort of, you know, what, how are you planning on spending all that money, sort of, so, I just...
Are we looking at more land acquisitions?
That was included in the levy wording, but again...
And I'd like to comment, in the past five years, we've had the opportunity to receive that opportunity, so we thought it was prudent to put that language in there because we wouldn't have a Dollar property, might have the Guandee property, but it still costs us money. We got another parcel up on the end of...
That connects to cells on the way back.
Connects to cells, so...
And if you go, there's a piece of property that we want to do, like a Clean Ohio grant, there is a certain amount of match that you have to have for it, so...
Well, we may, we may or we may not, but if we kind of use the language where we, you know, we couldn't have an opportunity to get something.
Right.
So, there was that, some first thought there in terms of putting that language, so that's the way also to explain to the public, whenever we have these opportunities that come forward and we need a match, or we have something and we think it's a good forward move for the city, we have the ability, if it's there.
And conversely, a budget being tight, we have the option to say, that's a really nice piece of property, we really do appreciate the thought, folks, we can't afford it.
Dall Lake was one of those examples.
It comes to you.
Right, but 10 years from now.
Didn't come up to council.
I mean, that's a 20-year.
Or if we're transferring property like we did with Dall Lake, if you take a private property out, you're taking it out of the tax base.
Right, but, you know, so you could say, I wouldn't want to say, well, we're never going to get land again.
I wouldn't either.
You know, so, I think that's, right now, even though there's probably not very much out there that's going to be acquired, I mean, there's not a lot of, you know, land, sort of...
Part of the Dollar property to connect to Rotan because they want to, they want us to have that. There's sections in between that'd be really nice to be given.
Right. Most of the time we've gotten land, it's been through donation and/or Clean Ohio, which is a really good turnaround on a minimal amount of...
That's true, but even if someone comes along and gives you 20 acres of land absolutely free and clear, it's just yours, folks, I don't want anything back, I'm anonymous, just take it off my hands. You still got to maintain it.
Kind of mow it, sure.
I mean, you still got to send somebody out there every once in a while, just check on it, see if someone has built a shack or has grown marijuana or something, it still has to be maintained, it's our responsibility. So, there is a cost there. It's hidden, but it's there.
So, Chair, one more question. One thing I heard today was a better way to organize the meeting of the auditor, Rich, and finance and personnel, that having a more regular sit-down, and I'm not sure how that's, because I'm not chair, but that request has been put out on the table, that there's a more regular conversation about arts, parks, and recreations, budget, cash flow, whatever, not a meeting like this at the end of the year. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, so, that needs to happen quarterly or every other month or something, but I did hear that come across in all this conversation.
Yes, and we should do that, I'm all for that. Maybe monthly, quarterly, whatever you want.
Full moon.
Because this fund, I mean, I know finance officers in other municipalities that meet monthly with the department heads to talk about budget issues. I don't know that that's necessary here, although I'd be willing to do it. I think it helps when the people who run these departments feel more connected to the other department heads and you know what's going on financially. However, this is just that kind of fun that needs more attention.
It seems like that would be a good idea, to be meeting on a regular basis.
Yeah, so if we set it up regularly, instead of trying to catch you and find out you're on vacation, and, you know, then you will go to training, and, you know, so, I'm fine with that.
So, I would foresee that that's something, a positive thing that could come out of this meeting we just had today.
I think so.
So, I guess the other take on...
Anytime, I don't have a wife.
Will you bring them? Will you bring them?
We know that.
I do.
So, the other thing is that council is in, willing to make some transfers and adjustments for the short term, and as your budget talks for next year's start, then that's where you move on to other issues, which will hopefully be presented and vetted by Rich and, you know...
Okay, so for Monday?
Yes, that's what I'm...
Yes, okay, you want an ordinance, I suspect you want to suspend?
I defer to the auditor's office, but it has to be done this month, I can't go into next month.
Yeah, it really does, it really does.
We can go two readings, but we can't go three.
Yeah.
Right.
That'd probably be...
Can we look at it, can we go back to the office and look at it real quick and let you know today?
Yeah, sure, well...
Or Monday, or whatever, before Monday, whether you need suspension. We're going to need it, whether we need it suspended on Monday. Because as I said, they do have money, they do bring in deposits every week, it's just not enough to keep up with the bills. We'll be transferring payroll next week, and we all just got paid this week, and so, that chunk of money will have to come out of there. And then the monthly fund transfers, that's 30, $35,000 right there, just for those two things that we do. So, can we just let you know?
Sure.
Before the meeting on Monday.
And some of the other actions can be taken just simply by an email to the auditor's office for unencumbering, so...
Yeah, so like the transfers, you know, we can transfer money among the 200 and 300s without council action, but 200 to 500 or vice versa, that takes council action. So, that's the difference with moving the money around, there is some leeway there for them to move money without council action, but then other movements need council action.
Okay.
Just so the auditor and committee knows, that Andrew and our staff, myself, will be going over our programs, we'll have, you know, looking at, the first of the year is always kind of an easier time to increase or change status quo, not in the middle or something, so. We try to have our ducks in a row to what fees or what policies we adopt and how we move forward will be implemented 2016.
Sounds good. Do we have any miscellaneous? I was afraid of that.
May Rich and Andrew leave, does it have anything to do with...
Yes.
Okay.
You're excused.
Thank you.
I always wanted to say that.
Hey, wait a minute. Let's just say, next Thursday.
Yeah, I need your line.
You can take one to go.
I'm leaving. Not a good healthy life.
I want to make it clear that those doughnuts came out of my own pocket.
They were not paid for with city funds.
Actually, my wife's pocket is. I'm multitasking. I got iOS 9.
Are you ready?
Well, I guess so.
Okay, this sample ordinance, draft ordinance, I mean, just came out today, and so, but we just want to point this out, Laura, I'm going to let you talk for a few minutes.
Thank you.
Looks like I did quite a job here.
I think it's on the second page, if you flip over from the ordinance. I did just a real quick review, since we were considering appropriating $75,000 from the 865 Internal Service Fund. If we do appropriate that money, we will be bringing the balance of that appropriation, appropriative fund to $39,731. So far, the revenue into 865 this year has been $302,000. However, the total expenses out of 865 have been $342,000. Our current cash balance in 865 is $125,000. I just wanted to make people aware of where we are in terms of our...
Oh, this is internal service?
Yes, it is.
Well...
I mean, it's IT, internal services is IT and mechanics.
Right.
Right.
And the $75,000 is for the server?
For the servers, is my understanding.
Right, and I, when this was brought up last week, I...
You asked me, I said the money is there, you can see the cash is there, but she's pointing out the fact that we're running higher in terms of cost, but...
Is that because we had a...
Your only other choice would be to take it from the general fund.
Okay, so...
Do we see any more big expenses?
Right, you just want to make sure that they have what they need for the end of the year, and because there are people paid out of that, it's the same with the community center, you have to have some money in there to make those first payrolls early in the year. And so, these last two pages, well, yeah, the last page is a fund balance from 2014, their fund balance, carryover was $183,000, so, for this year. And that's why they have overspent their actual revenue for the year, current revenue, and it's just something to think about.
Any idea why revenues are declining in general?
I would say that the carryover was so great because we didn't take this action on the servers, I mean, there's been a need for this upgrade for the main server for some time.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a valid expense, we're not going in the negative, but it just...
It just seems like we've had a lot of expenses in that department, and I don't know about mechanics as well, I mean, we've heard about things, but it just seems like...
They used to have three mechanics, and there's only been two mechanics for the last few years. And then we did increase what was a part-time position to a full-time assistant in IT, but that's still only these two of them. If you're more comfortable, feel like there's a need based on what the auditor's recommending, divide it, maybe half out of general fund and half out of the 865.
I just want to be clear, we're not recommending one thing other than that, I want to be clear.
I don't know that I would recommend that.
I'm trying to figure out why revenues are down.
Well, I can tell you one reason why.
I mean, it's self-generating, you know? Okay.
Well, it is, and it's, it's a, it's Paul was kind of hinting at, your expenses from one year to the next, if you have to make a major purchase such as a server, you just don't always know that. Now, there will continue to be revenue put in there, that money is transferred from all the departments that either have a vehicle or a computer, or both. So, there will be some more money coming in there, it's just tighter than it has been, we just want you to be aware of it, and if they have any other major purchases through the end of the year, they're probably not going to be able to do it.
So, are you saying that revenues are consistent from year to year?
No. Because I'll tell you something else, if council was involved in this, we changed our cost allocation plan.
Right.
Right, I remember.
So, the amount of money being sent, some went up, some went down.
Yeah, no, the Internal Services Fund...
Well, yeah, that's true, that's just a question, yeah.
We've had a request to look at the Internal Services Fund allocation, we haven't yet. That's remained the same, the general fund.
We didn't change the allocation, which is something that we should maybe do, we did the other Internal Services Fund. So, that could be part of it, is that does need to be changed, we didn't change those, and, you know, we have to get good figures on how many vehicles and how many computers are around the city from somewhere else.
Well, that certainly has declined. I mean, we have more vehicles now, and we have more computers.
Right, but also, I would expect that it's not necessarily revenue, that's also outlay.
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about the outlay, I'm not talking about the expense side of it, okay? Expenses, we can't, we don't really... Expenses, we can't, we don't really, don't know what's going to happen. But revenue on something that is internal within the system, within the city, and we know where it's derived from, should be predictable and it should be consistent. It shouldn't fluctuate. And you can't say, well, wait a minute, this week, we just didn't use many computers. Using computers...
No, we don't allow that. We don't allow that. I'll tell you right now, I'm on another board and they bill their internal admin fees monthly, and they change monthly for their programs. We don't do that. We do that by the year. We get a count of computers and vehicles. And no, it doesn't fluctuate wildly.
Well, it's basically about $33,000 a month that goes into 865. That's the total from all the departments that donate into that fund or...
But what I'm seeing is that the total revenue to date, I don't know whether it's gone up and down since last year because it's not on this information, but when you compare it to the outlay, the expenses, that's what it looks like, that it's going, that it's gone down. And I wonder if it's because the city does have a tendency to hold on to property or equipment or try to fix things for a long time. And that means that that expense goes up the last year before you buy something new because you're spending a lot of time and energy, money fixing something. So that definitely is more unpredictable than revenue coming in because if you're dealing